Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at six thirty three. And Tom, I think that it's your turn to be enacted as a voting member.
Okay.
Larry's not here. I don't see, it looks like everybody else is here. So did we read the July twenty seventh minutes or transcript or whatever that is?
Very long.
July twenty seventh, what Sue faithfully typed out every word that we said.
Did you want to be privileged of the floor?
Pardon?
Privilege of the floor, I, I guess we're dispensing.
Privilege of the floor, we'll do that after we do the minutes.
Oh, okay, fine, I just, yeah.
Yep. So are there any comments on the minutes from July twenty seventh? Is everybody listening to them? Can I hear a motion to approve them?
So moved.
That cut.
Doing, or? Dad been Sandy? Sue? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? So it carried, any abstained? Okay. And then we have the August tenth minutes from the last meeting, which was fairly short. The cabinets?
Go.
Now your motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Sandy and Deborah? All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Abstained? So carried. So have we received any comments for the public, for the privilege of the floor?
Well, it's hard to say, there are two people in the room that I'm not familiar with their names. I can certainly admit them and see what they're interested in speaking to the board about. That sounds reasonable.
And there was an email.
Yeah, we'll read that into.
Yep, and I've, I've asked you to follow up with that, so hold on just a moment and I'm.
Dana, are you there? Dana Woszynski?
Oh, sorry, Sean, it's Sean Woszynski.
Oh.
Cargill does not support the Zoom platform, so I have to use my wife's account.
Okay, you're here to speak about the cargo project?
Yes, I was just ready to change my name.
Okay, no worries, just didn't know who you were, we'll just put you in the waiting room until that project, okay?
Okay, wonderful.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Did you have another?
Um, I don't believe so. There's a bunch of people in here, but I recognize most of the names here, almost all of them, there's only this one, one four six nine. Let me just admit them real quick and see who this might be. Yes, hello, the person with number one four six nine three oh seven seven one two two, could you identify yourself?
My name is Melissa Gessen with Cargill, I'm the product manager for a project we're about to present.
Okay, understood, we'll put you at the waiting room, okay, thanks very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So we have no comments?
Just the comments received on the matter that is a bit further down in the agenda, number seven, it's up to the board, would you like to hear that now?
It's on the agenda, so we'll wait and deal with that when we get to the agenda item. All right. Guess we'll move right into the town board liaison report, no, Nick Helmgold?
Yeah.
Do you want to bring him in and we'll listen to his comments?
Yes, submitting Nick now.
This is Nick.
And sorry everyone for the mess behind me, but I have company, so I'm relegated to my radio check.
I wondered what that was.
There's a lot of wiring going on down here.
Oh, there is. I always knew you were kind of wired.
Okay, Nick should be here, let's see if I can spotlight him there. Hey Nick, are you there?
I'm, I'm here, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, I'm, I'm outside, so I'm just gonna leave the video off, if that's all right. Uh, so yeah, did you guys have, have questions you wanted to jump in with, or do you want me to give you kind of a little overview of where we're at? I don't know, where, where do you want me to start?
An overview of where you're at would be fine.
Okay, great. Um, so, just a little background, so Tompkins County began charging a hotel room occupancy tax in the eighties. And since that point, we've had a taxes applied to all lodgings, including bed and breakfasts and hotels and so forth. Really, you know, the market was relatively stable, you know, in that regard with the, to the small properties until about five years ago. Five or 10 years ago, depending on where you are, when you really started to see the Airbnb and other VRBO type sites gaining popularity. My, my predecessor, Tom Knipe, he got the county involved in what's called the voluntary collection agreement, which is another, I agree that we have with Airbnb and and the voluntary collection agreement basically specifies that Airbnb will collect the hotel room occupancy tax on behalf of its hosts. This sort of formalized our, our arrangement with them and began our interest really at the county level in, in short-term rentals. And since then, we've heard from a lot of the towns that there's also a lot of interest in this topic as well. So we've been thinking about this for a little while here, we've decided we wanted to learn a lot more about this segment. So we've been preparing a, a request for proposals for a firm to do some data monitoring and analytics on short-term rentals. And what that really entails is having, you know, basically a program that, that surveils and monitors the short-term rental websites, including Airbnb, VRBO and the like, on a daily basis to determine, you know, who is out there, who is currently listing properties for, for short-term rental. And to, to gain a lot more insight about that market, for, for our purposes of the county, you know, our primary interest is in tax compliance. But we want to make sure that the data that we procure through this is accessible and available to the towns and villages in the city of Ithaca for other uses you may, you may see with regard to whether it's code enforcement or other questions you have. I know the city of Ithaca is strongly interested in the questions relating to housing affordability and so forth. So where we're at in the process is we have a draft RFP, I, I believe CJ, I sent it your way a few days back. And as soon as I get sort of the final green light from our finance department, it'll be released. And we know of two firms that are out there that are qualified to, to put in proposals for this RFP. There may be other ones, we'll, you know, we'll see those as they come up. So we're putting together an evaluation team to look at the, you know, proposals and hopefully having this vendor secured before the end of the year. So we can start collecting data on short-term rentals throughout the county. So the type of data we would collect is about the market performance, you know, the number of, number of units that are out there, where they're located, specific addresses of those units, the, the prevailing rates they're charging, and the amount of nights they're booking. Some of that data will be better than others, depending on, you know, how the, how we're able to gather it. But we, we are pretty confident that we'll be able to pay for the service through the tax compliance alone that will, will result. So that's a, that's kind of the, the long and short of where we are, and I'm, you know, happy to answer any questions that your town has, so I'll leave it at that.
Would this program collect any information on the presence of the owner of the property, or the availability of the owner of the property being rented?
Not necessarily, it would depend on, we'd have to compare that to, you know, whether, other data that would indicate whether the house is being used as a primary residence. I think we have some of that in the assessment department, but I have to confirm that with staff over there.
Would there be a way to put that information, to get that information, or have you already written up the, the proposals or the, the project to the point where you couldn't add that, because that's information that's very important to us?
Well, we can certainly ask the firms out there to, to, to share whatever they have on that. I think it gets a little tricky because from the vantage point of what's listed on a, a short-term rental listing, like an Airbnb page, it won't necessarily say whether it's owner occupied or an owner is present. So that, I think the firms are going to be limited in their capacity to deliver that, we can certainly ask for it though.
We appreciate that.
So, so Nick, did you describe the way that they're going to gather information? They're just going to gather it passively by looking at listings, or they're actually going to contact listers?
So, yeah, that's a great question, so the way it work, the way these firms work is they have a, a program, like a piece of software that, that goes out and scans various different short-term rental sites frequently, right? It'll, it'll basically run a search, just like if you were planning a vacation to go to Ithaca, it will look and pull up all those listings. And it will compare what the results it got one day to the results it got the day before, to see if things have changed, like the number of the, the calendars that are listed, or the rates that are listed. It, when a new listing pops up, then there's a human validation component to it for both of the firms that I'm aware of, where the, the firm will actually send that new listing to a actual human to look at and, you know, compare the data that's on the Airbnb listing to publicly available data, to, you know, determining the exact address, what municipality it belongs in, other, other features of the property. So, once we have that validated information, then that's what's basically supplied to the county in a, through a web portal. So, so there's both, it was both a computer element and a human element to it, to how it's, how they're gathering information. The, the firms will not contact any of the hosts or any of the property owners, that's on the county, that's on the county or.
So how are they going to verify the owner information?
Through publicly accessible records, through our assessment data and other, other pieces of information.
You'll give them access then to the image made advanced?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be able to see what they need to see to, to make those kinds of conclusions. And they might not always be able to make a conclusion, they may be in a spot where it's not always obvious, this is, this is a bigger issue in cities that have lots of apartment buildings. Where it's often tricky to determine, you know, which unit in an apartment is being rented. But.
We, we have properties out there that are in the name of a trust, or the mailing address is a PO box. So going to the assessment records or public records in the clerk's office is not going to get you an owner many times, nor a mailing address, nor a email address or even a phone number.
Well, if the, if the property is clearly out of compliance with their hotel tax law, we will have other ways to bring them into compliance, I under, so.
And, and then the other question is, what about the properties that are, say, advertising the shopper or Craigslist, or have residents that have rented it every, the same week every year for the last 10 years? How are, how are you going to pick up those old rentals?
Good questions, the, if it's on Craigslist, this, this, these services will scan Craigslist. Okay. If it's on a, a print advertisement, like the shopper, that's, we're not going to be able to catch that. Or if it's, if it's what we'd call market leakage, you know, where somebody has, you know, it has a, has an interpersonal relationship with somebody and they rent, that's, that's, you know, unfortunately probably beyond the scope of this, this RFP, we're not going to be able to detect those.
What, what about complaints? On through the sheriff's office or whatever? To look at the other side of the disturbance that sometimes happens when they release.
So yeah, we're, we're definitely aware that there's, there are definitely issues and neighbor, you know, good neighbor issues between hosts, some hosts and, you know, the people who live near them, whether it's parking noise, litter, you know, you, you name it. Where we're, you know, with, within the, the county, you know, that's, no, those are not topics that we regulate. That's why we want to make sure that the data that we have, that we do get through this is available to the towns and villages, because those are within your code enforcement sort of scope. So if you need to track down or determine, you know, that somebody is not out of compliance with your short-term rental policy or other, other ordinances, you'll have that information available.
Very good, are there any more questions?
Yeah, I'd like to know how the, how the information's going to be organized, how long a period is this going to be done for? So is this a one or two-year contract, is this going to be ongoing for the future? Are we going to be able to take different kinds of snapshots in time, so say, you know, what the summer looks like versus the fall?
Yeah, yeah, great questions, on, on the term, you know, we're asking for an initial one-year agreement with the option to extend if we're satisfied. If we're, if you also asked about comparing different periods, we'll absolutely be able to do that. The data organization, you know, we've asked for everything to be delivered in a, an Excel or CSV format ultimately, so that it's, you know, compatible with different systems. Both the vendors that I'm aware of have web portals, basically where you can log in and see all of the information sort of at a glance in a, in a web browser.
So Nick, when you go in to that portal and take a look, will you be able to set parameters and, and perform searches yourself for whatever period of time you desire?
That's, that's our understanding, is that, yeah, we'll have the ability to, to filter within that data site, yeah.
Will we be able to download the data and who owns it?
The, the county would be ultimate owner of it, we were asking that the vendors make it clear that we would be sharing it with the, the towns and villages within the county for, for their own decision-making purposes.
And Nick, would this be something akin to a kind of a local version of Air DNA? We looked at that a little bit here with the planning board.
Yeah, 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 like a local or, like, and with a lot more detail.
Oh, okay.
Any more questions for Nick? Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good night.
You too.
Appreciate you being here.
So Doug, do you have a liaison report?
I could do it, but in light of the extensive agenda, I would probably say let's do it the next time.
That's fine.
That's okay.
Yep, you don't have anything pressing to report?
Uh, no.
So we'll move into the Britton. Britton subdivision, is that next? Yes, Britton Woods major subdivision.
Yes, would the board like to see the applicants here in the room?
Yeah.
Okay.
I see, I assume Dandy's here for this?
Uh, yes, Dandy's here to be able to speak about this project and also the Maple Avenue Minor Subdivision as desired.
Oh, Dandy?
Why, hello?
And Tim, I assume will show up?
I think I'm here now, someplace, hopefully.
In name only.
You can see your name, we missed your face.
Uh, let me turn my camera on, okay, here we go.
There we go.
All right, he's back.
And Scott has connected, it says.
How are you folks tonight?
Good, so where are we going with this? Did we have some disagreements or some? Some CJ, what did you have on this?
Details.
Uh, so I believe the respective engineers, the both of the town and the owners have worked out the details of the questions regarding the stormwater. But I did ask Dandy to attend, just in case you had any questions about it, or they had any clarifying points that they'd like to make.
So do we have sticking points on the drainage still between the two ponds?
I think that's been pretty much resolved, but leave it to Dandy and Scott, they, they had several back and forths last week on things, so.
Yeah, from my perspective, I think things have been solidified, I think there's been a, a final swift that I haven't seen yet. I don't know if that's been submitted, but discussions with Scott, it seems like it's been worked out.
Yeah, Dandy, I sent it to CJ this afternoon late, just had to get to it, but I'll send you a copy of it too, when we get done here. But it says, as you and Scott discussed.
Great.
Think one of the other problems was the road going to within 20 feet of the property line? Is that now evident on a flat someplace?
Yes, it is, yeah, CJ, I think I sent that to you and I also followed up with the actual site plan showing it.
Uh, yes, the plot that you received via mail and also in the electronic packet does show the roadway extending to, to the property line.
The stormwater's been dealt with? To every. Say what, Scott?
I said, yeah, stormwater's been dealt with, I, I think we're in agreement there.
Yeah, Scott's very happy about that, right?
Well, we had some back and forth and, um, I think, I think we're there, so.
We just received, as, as Tim mentioned, we just received the final iteration of that SWF just this evening, a couple hours ago, so. Of course, the final plat condition will be satisfaction of town engineers for the final SWF, so.
Yep.
There's still time to be able to iron any of those details out if need be.
Fifty people, can I decide which nine I want on the screen?
Do we have any other questions? Does anyone have any other questions on the board? For the?
I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a resolution in front of us?
I would move the resolution.
I got Dean.
Second. Listen, all in favor, do we vote by roll?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I didn't get the second, and I'll do the roll call.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Once again, there is a mistake in terms of the number of acres. The, the third whereas has it as 3.42 acres and it's more than that.
Nine point seven acres is what it is.
Right, so that, that has to be changed.
How that keeps being wrong and everyone, I will.
Somehow managers just show up.
Yeah, we can change that.
Good catch, Tom.
I'll make that change to the resolution right now.
And I still didn't hear who the second, the person who seconded it, okay, thank you. Okay, Sandy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
Great, thank you folks, very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah, I'm getting rain here.
Yeah, you guys got a lot of rain in Ithaca, nothing up here, so.
Yeah, well, this is Watkins, so we're getting pounded on right now, it's great. I wish you all good rain.
Yeah, yeah.
Wish you all good drainage.
Yeah. All right, thanks folks, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.
Okay, we'll move on to the Harts Maple, Maple Ave Minor Subdivision. Everyone had a chance, this is where we'll read the, Dev, would you like to read that into the record? Make sure everybody's heard it.
I don't have a copy of it in front of me. I could make something up, but sorry, I didn't print it out.
Yeah, I don't think I did either.
Sue should be able to read that into the record for us.
All right, I can read that. Okay, so this is from Dan Isbell, and he's asking for the statement to be read at tonight's planning board meeting. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposal to subdivide the lot at 21 Maple Ave Lansing lot into three parcels. I believe along with other neighbors of the property, that this will have a negative and permanent impact on the wooded area itself, the surrounding environment, and the historic culture of Letherville. I am the closest family right next door at 11 Maple Ave. I viewed last month's meeting and know that this consensus of the planning board was that a decision to agree to redraw the property lines would, in and of itself, not have a narrative impact, or negative impact, I'm sorry. This is not the case. By agreeing to redraw these property lines, the planning board is setting into action the necessary steps for development of the property into not just one, but two additional lots for the total of three parcels, where there is now just one. Negative environmental aesthetics and cultural consequences that will inevitably follow. I want to emphasize just a few points. I want to emphasize just a few points raised by myself and others, only one of which should be a justifiable cause to deny the request tonight and to divide these wooded areas into separate lots. And he's got a couple of bullet points. The first bullet point is the majority of trees would need to be removed to accommodate construction on these very small lots. This would have a drastic negative impact on the ecology of the area and the fragile relationship of plants and animals have with the ecosystem and on the overall health of Salmon Creek. This must be professionally and objectively studied prior to any decision. The second bullet point is storm runoff currently is appropriately and wisely routed to this area. It is not known how or if the storm runoff would be adjusted to accommodate future building sites. It cannot be diverted to other properties. It cannot be diverted into Salmon Creek. This runoff issue two must be studied prior to any change of the property lines and it has not. The third bullet point is the following statements are quoted from the UNA dash twenty-eight assessment of this area. The site is considered historically valuable by local residents. Wetland identified by National Wetland Inventory are found on this site. And it says, A, New York State protected, it must be a protected New York straight streams run through Lethville. This area is its primary value is at a single and at least one plant species designated in New York State as endangered, threatened, or rare or exploited vulnerable is found on this site. A field check is always recommended prior to modifying the landscape. And then the last big bullet point is the historic and cultural value that Lethville currently has would be dramatically altered with the removal of this wooded area and the construction of new homes. I know of not a single person in the surrounding area who is in favor of this proposal. Um, members of the community pay taxes. As a result, the collective voices of community members should pay play a pivotal role in this important decision. I urge the planning board to deny this request to subdivide the lot at twenty-one Maple Ave Lansing.
Do we have any other of the many neighbors that he's discussed in the letter that has spoken up or written to us, CJ?
Uh, I have not received any additional communication other than what was read at the public hearing last month.
I guess one of the questions I'd have to ask on this is if this fellow who owns the property decided to build two more units there for whatever reason, or put up a barn and a or two next door to his house. Do, would we have anything to say about that if he wasn't subdividing the two lots to sell?
Uh, that's a good question. Uh, so this particular parcel is in the R two zoning district. So, uh, if they wanted to do an additional, uh, for instance, a, let's see uh, three do, uh, units, uh, dwelling unit, they would need twelve thousand square feet per dwelling unit. So that would be twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, so. It would actually could be a higher density, although they would need to go through site plan approval to be able to do that.
But they could build outbuildings on that property and clear the same amount of land that they cleared for dwelling. In other words, he could put a barn up and a cottage or anything else that he wanted to, or is that not the case?
Uh, so a one or two dwelling, uh, unit would need twelve, the twenty thousand square feet per dwelling unit. Uh, and if you wanted to do three or more dwelling units on the same parcel, they could be twelve thousand, uh, square feet per dwelling unit as long as the lot was at least three acres or larger, in which case it is, so.
But I I think Jerry's Jerry's leading up to that if the property owner wanted tomorrow to cut down the trees, he could just go out there with a chainsaw and cut down the trees. There's no protection that the town or the the DEC or the, um, feds have other than the area within the wetland. And saying, and likewise, if he wanted to put up a garage, all he would need is a building permit. He wouldn't need to come to the planning board or the zoning board, correct?
I see. Yes, I didn't mean to be obtuse there. Um, I can speak a little bit to the, um, so the clearing and Dandy's actually here and is as a wealth of knowledge on stormwater, but silviculture, as it were, to manage the lands and selectively harvest the lands without extracting the stumps would essentially be silviculture, not necessarily subject to a stormwater controls. Now, if the applicant did want to clear a half an acre, uh, so that's about twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet, give or take. We would ask them to do some basic, um, erosion and sediment controls. And Dandy could also speak to this, but yes, if certainly if they wanted to put in the garage or driveway to the garage or something of that nature, certainly they would just receive a building permit.
But if they wanted to just cut down trees, they can just cut down trees. It's on their property, correct?
They certainly could log their property, uh, or do a more selective harvest. Yes, uh, I would defer to Dandy on this one because I think logging technically, if it's greater than one acre, does need, uh, stormwater. Uh, I think it does need stormwater controls. But I think it depends on the municipality and I'm not sure that we have anything in place about logging, specifically logging. Uh, because there is a right to forestry law too, so.
Our point is not that he could log, but that he has a lot of rights to use that property as it presently stands. And a lot of those uses are uses that the neighbor seems to find objectionable. And yet he wouldn't have to come in front of us in front of this board to, uh, perform a lot of those uses. Is, and I guess that's what we're asking. Dandy, do you have something to say to this?
Yeah, it seems.
With this discussion?
I can see where you're you're heading there and I feel like you're 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 accurate in the assumption that you can go in and and, you know, put it in an outbuilding based on your zoning. You know, clearing land is a separate item, you know, it may trigger a stormwater SWIP if your landing area is over an acre, but something small like that, I don't see it triggering, um, you know, s- stormwater stuff.
Typically, to be clear, Dandy, if somebody wanted to go in and clear, the the SWIP is typically going to be in the nature of a silk fence that's dug in. So, so we're not talking about something very onerous for the property owner to basically go in and clear cut the lot and stay outside of the, uh, the wetland area.
Right, with your residential for the town of Lansing, you can disturb up to two acres and still be under any SWIP requirements, so. Yeah, now there's full right from a stormwater perspective to go in and disturb up to two acres.
Da- Dandy, could help, could you help me out with the buffer zone?
Yeah.
Feds and what what the limitations are within that hundred foot buffer?
Based on my understanding, there's no DEC wetlands in this area. It's just Army Corps wetland.
Right.
Which is, uh, no buffers built into their permits.
Oh, there is it. There is no buffer with the, for the Army Corps of Engineers.
No, so you can you can, uh, excavate out of a wetland as long as you don't place any fill, so you can disturb a wetland as long as you're not placing fill within it.
Okay.
But it's good practice to to give a little buffer and try to keep out of any you know, true wetlands that are at a present.
There's, there's no approval process if somebody wanted to put a shed or stormwater pond or a rain garden is within that hundred foot of the wetland. Is that correct?
Correct. From an Army Corps, there there isn't any, you know, I don't believe there's any town buffers um, within zoning or anything that has been adopted. Some other municipalities will will take a fifty foot or a hundred foot buffer along any stream corridor. No build zone.
Okay.
To the best of your knowledge, Dandy, are we we would be within our rights to ask that they not disturb within fifty feet of the wetland? A delineated line on the wetlands down there?
I think that's a reasonable request. I don't know if there's any, uh, regulation that you can, uh, limit that, but, uh, I think that's a reasonable.
I thought we talked about a one hundred foot buffer.
Yes, so the applicant has agreed to that.
Yeah, that's shown on the plat and that's, so that's pretty generous.
And they've agreed to it and as long as they've agreed to it, then we can, uh, certainly, um, demand it or suggest it. Go ahead, Al.
No, I just, I'm I'm just concerned about, um, there being adequate room if indeed they do decide to sell it and it's approved for, um, you know, the stormwater, they may need, they may need to go into that buffer zone for the stormwater.
Yeah, um, you know, I don't know if you've seen the kind of quick options I've I've laid out here on stormwater, but with a residential, if you're over two acres of disturbance, that's when it triggers a basic SWIP that needs to be prepared. Still no permanent controls. It's just erosion and sediment control. So I I see both lots as probably not necessarily requiring it from a state perspective, any kind of quality or quantity, but more of a erosion sediment control. You know.
I mean, I mean, I can understand not having any improvements that the house, garages or whatever within the buffer zone, but I I I'm a little reluctant to say no no touching of that hundred foot buffer. That's that's all.
No disturbance because they need to use that as part of the stormwater plan.
Right, well, but I mean, you need to, I mean, I think we need to qualify what the word disturbance, what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, the plat shows no any wetlands and I think that we probably need to quantify that that we're talking about, not necessarily just DEC, but also the Army Corps wetlands. And then there's a major concern by the neighborhood about the rest of the neighborhood dumping their stormwater into these parcels. And so we may need to have that addressed in terms of, like Al said, the buffer itself and or the wetland area being allowed to be used as a, um, uh, stormwater catchment as needed to protect Salmon Creek for the entire neighborhood that's dumping all their stormwater there.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, that's taken up a large part of the parcel. Some of it's going to end up with residents on it. And there's not much room for any practices to ameliorate those. Oh, I think there's a lot of stormwater that's running down too there that we'd like to catch or slow down before it hits Salmon Creek if we could. I would assume the engineers would like to see that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar, I'm not familiar of any offsite conveyance yet. I know there was request for some additional topo and and, uh, survey out there for any catch basins or drainage structures, and I haven't seen any of that, but if there's a a bigger town drainage, um, concern, you know, that's something we can look into.
So is this drainage issue, um, on the subdivision itself, or does it come into play when there's actually buildings being built?
It's a good question.
My understanding is part of the drainage issue is drainage from other parcels.
Right.
So they don't want the owner to subdivide because they're draining onto his land? Do I have that right?
That's part of it.
Yeah.
I think that the hundred feet is is a lot, even though he's agreed to it. I think that that's asking too much. And that's something that they're going to find difficult to live with if they actually are receiving a lot of stormwater from other parcels and then they're going to try to deal with it on these properties and still build anything reasonable. So I would be in favor of dropping that down to fifty feet if, uh, the board is in favor also.
With the proviso that it could be used for stormwater practices, as you mentioned.
Right, without, but I think that what we were trying to say last time was that we didn't want to build in any buildings down there within a hundred feet. I don't think we were really trying to say you can't, you can't try to ameliorate stormwater problems within that hundred feet. I don't know how to say that or put that on the plat.
I think we can find the wordsmith thing to do that within the office or somewhere.
Well, okay, if I could just back up for a second, the quest is to help to mitigate the stormwater impact from the larger sub watershed or?
No, we're of the opinion that there are the other properties around this property have been developed in such a way that much of their stormwater ends up dumping into this property. So these properties in order to be developed are going to need to ameliorate that stormwater in some way. And we don't want to tie their hands too far. In other words, we want to allow them to use some of that land that gets closer to the wetlands to build a retainage pond or anything else or whatever other thing they make them up with, they need to do that to settle the sediment out before it gets to Salmon Creek.
Well, you may need a hundred foot buffer to do that.
But you may want the, 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 uh, the pond, the storm retainage pond to be within that buffer. In other words, down as close to the creek as you can get the stormwater down before it gets there, right? We don't want to tell them to can't build stormwater practices in that hundred foot.
So it's basically.
The garage or a fishing shed or a bait shop there.
So the buffer is basically to prevent building within that area. But not to prevent stormwater.
So, yeah, no structures where you could still do grading activities and clearing within the buffer, so it's.
We could call it a no build zone.
There you go.
And Dandy, you you said that the actual wetland, since it's a Army Corps wetland, could actually be have ex- additional excavation done to it to, uh, it just can't have fill added to it. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. That's how the permit's written. And the mapping that you've probably seen is just Army Corps' older you know, high level mapping. Um, I don't know if there's been a site specific delineation done, but, uh, based on my you know, understanding of some of them happening, I've seen online, I I don't know if that boundary is truly accurate of what may be actually out there in the field. Um, I haven't visited the site, but something just to think about, that what's shown on the map may not actually be what's shown there on the property.
So if the board wishes during, uh, environmental review, which I think we're about to do just review the part one and two, I mean, when you're ready, of course. We can, uh, address the delineation. If you'd like, uh, Army Corps to come down from, uh, Auburn, they certainly could delineate the wetland, uh, on behalf of the applicant, so. Uh, I don't mean to derail the conversation here related to this, but, um, if this is a need, uh, the the planning board wants to see a mitigation of this particular impact, um, we could, we could certainly do that as part of SECRE.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see it delineated on the, on the plat.
Yeah. Does, does the county wetland inventory show it?
Yes, because it's a national wetland, uh, so it shows up on, uh, on their inventory as well in the natural resources inventory, yes.
But once, once they go to the field, it But, but once, once they go to the field, it could be a lot larger or a lot smaller than what's shown up on the maps that we have, correct? Dandy?
Correct, yeah. It could most likely vary from what's shown. It's just a higher level mapping.
Right.
Potential areas.
Do we know what the uh, elevations are for hundred year and five hundred year flood in this area?
I believe there's some FEMA work maps that are out there, um, that aren't official yet, but do delineate the, the hundred year uh, water service elevations through that area.
And as I see in the uh, Seeker, they, they check no for hundred year and five hundred year. But we'll get to that. Did uh, any of the neighbors mention the um, the pathway there? And are we interested in that path for Trails Committee and any of the neighbors willing to um, have uh, pathway added to their lots? We have this fisherman access with no easement currently, but it's just kind of a path that's there right now.
That would seem like a good thing to maintain. And by the way, there is no Trails Committee per se. But one will be forming after this project that CJ started.
We keep giving you our support anyway.
Even though there isn't one and I ain't it. But I, I would agree with Dean. It would be a nice thing to have a fisherman's access there, particularly.
There is a fisherman that's down on Mill Street, right down behind it.
Yeah.
Well, there, there's the access, but this is an actual path on somebody's property that you know, allows people access to the stream bank as opposed to just the bank right there or getting in the water at the DEC site at the parking area. Sue, was there any mention from um, any of the neighbors who wrote in terms of uh willingness for everybody with Stream Bank in the neighborhood to provide like access on their properties?
I don't recall that. I believe I did include the, the neighbors' letters in the last minutes for the, I can't remember what it was, the uh
July twenty seventh?
Yes, that one. Yeah, I don't have a copy of that in front of me.
I don't recall that in any of the letters.
Neither.
Go ahead, Al.
The, the um, the survey map indicated that when the abstract was done for the sale of the property, they didn't find any uh, conveyance to the DEC for a trail for the fishermen. But I've fished that many, many times and there used to be plaques on the trees up and down that valley that said that it was open for um, uh, public access for certain feet back from the stream bank. So I'm guessing that, that property and most of those properties actually have an easement. It just, it wasn't found in the clerk's office or it may not have been reported. But I'm, I, I mean, that's a, it's a common thing to see fishermen there April first walking up and down all those properties behind the, the homes, and I believe they have legal access to do that. It's just that it wasn't located as part of the abstract.
Does the DEC have access to whatever class that stream is by definition?
Yeah, I would think if somebody made a call to the DEC and said, you have um, is there a uh, easement for um, the fishermen along that stream? That they should be able to find that, I would think. I don't know that for a fact.
I just wonder if any stream, any stream would have. You got what I'm talking about. It's a Class A stream, whether, whatever kind of stream it is.
Right, there's, there's not rights to, that necessarily convey with a specific class of streams. But regarding this particular access, um, I'll certainly ask council to um, to confer with DEC and see if there is um, anything that may just not have been picked up um, in the recording about this.
And I.
So back, back to our biggest concern, I think our biggest concern is that, one, we don't, we would like to see no physical improvements, no structures within fifty feet or a hundred feet, whatever we decide of the the uh, wetland boundary line, whereas within that fifty feet or a hundred feet, I think most of the board members are okay with some sort of stormwater or retention pond or rain garden. Is that correct?
I think so.
Correct for my state of way. Go ahead, Sue.
Okay, I hope so. All right, I have a email that just came in from Daniel Broadway in reference to this. And he's saying the ninety-seven flood was classified as a five hundred year flood, as I recall, and the water was about a hundred foot outside the stream on the property I own now. And Daniel Broadway is a neighbor. Did copy and paste that into the Zoom group chat, so you can always look at it.
So that'd be somewhere around the four hundred and thirty foot mark of elevation.
Well, we don't know where he's at or what the slope is at his place. But I would agree with you that that's probably like.
Maybe that accounts for that wetland is.
Well, well, what, if, if they decided to build housing on there and they went to the Health Department for a septic permit, the, the Health Department does not allow a septic system in Flood Zone A. I'm, I'm pretty certain. Dandy, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So they would, that would have to be dealt with during the um, application phase if indeed there were, there was gonna be an installation of a, of a private septic system. In other words, I think we need to refer to the Health Department for that concern rather than taking that upon our shoulders because we don't know where that flood zone is.
Right. So the Health Department, I mean, the uh, building permit, if they ever got a building permit for a property for this property, the Health Department would be involved in where the uh, the septic system was situated and that would be taken care of at that time.
Right.
Sure that they would maybe be uphill. Now, Mr. Broadway also suggests that there is no BEC fisherman access between the uh Fisherman's Parking Lot and Gary Schnack's property on that side of the stream, according to the DEC map of fisherman's access.
Okay.
So whatever path is, there is not a DEC approved path.
Okay.
And evidently, there isn't really any legal right that anyone has to walk down the stream bed and uh, outside of the stream. I don't know what the rule is for how far from the center of the stream is a navigable way, waterway, or is a waterway or?
Are windmills in business?
Do we want to, are there any other comments?
Just one more. Um, Daniel also added a third thing to this is um, I own the old Parker property at Nine Maple and the lawn area near the creek is about eight feet above the normal creek level. That lawn area was underwater about four to five inches of water in nineteen ninety-seven. Yeah, four to, four to five.
That was wet.
It gets wet when it floods.
You know, it really looks like these are gonna be two newly created lots. They're gonna be darn hard to build on. But it's not our issue.
Well, they don't have to be built on. They're gonna be for sale. Anybody can buy them. Somebody wants to maintain them as they are can buy them.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would suggest the town might wanna relook at zoning here because all the houses are closer than sixty feet. And to have a sixty-foot setback would push all these houses farther back than the natural setback along that street. And it might be better to have all the houses lined up with each other than to make the new ones push back uh, another twenty or thirty feet.
So would they, would they, would that be through zoning variance, Joe?
I would say what we do is we do an overlay district in that area, saying that the setback in this area is forty feet or whatever the house line turns out to be, and that would be a zoning uh, change. Uh, CJ could describe the process a little better than I would, but it's basically making a new zoning law. But instead of rewriting this as a new zoning area, you do an overlay saying in this area, we're gonna do things slightly differently than the rest of the zone.
It could, you could put maximums in place also. It's another way to do it, is uh.
Yeah, I think Ludnoville is a special case.
But does that apply to something that is in front of the board right now?
And is it only, is it only relevant to these two properties? I mean, are there other open, empty properties that are buildable along that area?
Well, it would apply if someone tore down a house completely and wanted to build something new, then they'd have to qualify with the zoning law as is, as supposed to be grandfathered in. So it applied to all the houses along that edge at least. I'd have to look at a map to see if there are other areas, but certainly along that uh, road frontage.
Yeah, I think you would wanna delineate a very specific area in Ludnoville and you know, in addition to tearing houses down, there are probably other lots there that could be subdivided, so it would potentially apply to them as well. And, you know, that's a neighborhood character issue.
So do you, do you guys wanna br- bring in the applicant to go through the uh, part one and part two? Or would you like to have them go back and uh, retrieve the um, uh, refer the plat to the Health Department, uh, get Army Corps of Engineers uh, down here from Auburn to delineate the property uh, and confirm the access with DEC, um, because I could track those things down in the interim. Um, although the applicant is here and can discuss the project as well.
Let, let's hear from the applicant first and see where, where, where he's, where he's going with this.
Okay.
Is that all right?
As the board wishes, okay. Hey, Matt, can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry, uh, it's muting uh, the uh, the YouTube and it was a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a little bit behind where the Zoom is, so.
So I guess that uh, let's see, did you have some additional comments you wanted to make?
Um, so uh, just in terms of the fishing access, I, I'd emailed CJ just while you guys were having that conversation. Um, I have spoken with the DEC officer, um, that's responsible for the area and he told me there is no easement or access um, that is there right now. Um, I, I told him I wasn't opposed to like having people on there. There's just no like um, current access that is um, like is an easement. Um, yeah, uh, I mean, I think that's the main uh, comment. Um, I think that in the previous meeting when we were talking about the hundred foot setback, um, that was under the assumption that it was a hundred feet was required, um, but what Dandy had shared tonight was uh um, news to me, so I'd be fine um, limiting that a little bit uh, shorter. I think those are the, the two main things.
Matt, how, how do you feel about a uh, easement to the town for pathway along the stream bank?
I, I would be open to that. I mean, I grew up fishing Salmon Creek and had walked along that when I was a kid, uh, fishing it. So I, I assumed when I talked to the DEC officer that there was an easement and he was the one that told me there wasn't, so I'm, I'm not opposed to doing that and if that's something the town would like, I'd be fine with.
That'd be great.
So do we wanna go through part one? Or has everyone already been through it? And did they find any problems or mistakes or errors? I don't think we usually go through it all thirteen pages.
Uh, he looks like it's um, incomplete, E one, page nine. All uses that occur on adjoining or near the site. He's just got residential checked. But probably should be aquatic as well.
Yeah.
And maybe forest, since the lot's currently forested.
Pretty small. So are we comfortable with where the wetland actually is?
I'm, I have the Army Corps of Engineers come and look at that.
Yeah, I think it would, it would be nice to have a.
And also find out information on the flood zones. I think that would be helpful to have on the.
I think that you'll find that the wetland down there along the creek is gonna change seasonally. And that what you look at it in August could be on different.
Particularly this August.
I mean, there's, it, the creek runs through there and there's wetlands next to it that collect, but they're not really wetlands. They're more seasonal. Uh, I wouldn't call them flooding, but dampening of the area. In other words, if you look at the topo map, there isn't much there that's gonna collect water.
Right.
On there near the bottom.
But there is a specific definition that um, the Army Corps or DEC uses to define what's a wetland. It doesn't have to be wet all the time. It just has to have wetland plants or I mean, the other thing is more than a wetland, it seems like that area is a flood plain. Because go down there now or most times it's dry.
Yes, sooner or later, you're gonna have to know what the delineation is. You know, if it's gonna be built on in the future and, um, it would seem like now would be the best time for us to figure that out, get it on the plat.
And Dandy, what's the procedure with the engineers? They come out and flag it, or what do they do?
Yeah, so for residential, you could request Army Corps and they would come down and they would uh, most likely flag the, the perimeter of a wetland. So then you can pick it up with a survey later and then put it on a.
And, and then it would be up to the surveyor to transfer that on the map. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, if you.
And is, is there a fee for the Army Corps to come down?
Um, it, it depends. I think on a residential, they might come down uh, with no fee. Larger commercial, there's uh, third party uh, contracts out there that can come in and delineate it for you.
So Matt, where did you get the floodplain info to uh, answer the questions on the um, the part one? Because I, I see five hundred year floodplain is checked as no.
Uh, yeah, so I had looked at the Tompkins County GIS mapping. Um, the one that's up on the uh, that, that um, on the town website that has like the agenda and all documents I see is, um, is not exactly the same as the one that I had seen, which includes the hundred year floodplain on like the back edge of those properties. Um, which is kind of in the same area as that wetlands.
Dandy, would the uh, Army Corps be able, when they're down, to um, verify what the hundred year and five hundred year limits would be on the property as well?
Uh, no, that wouldn't be um, something they would do. That would be more of a FEMA. Well, I guess to back up, there is a preliminary working map that FEMA has published for viewing. And I believe I sent a copy of that along. I don't know if that's easily available, but that, that shows true cross sections that FEMA has started mapping through that section. So that could be a good planning tool to start with before getting into, you know, detail survey and floodplain permits and things. So that's probably what you're looking for, which could be easily overlaid on, on the, on the parcel there.
I don't know.
Floodplain considerations unless we're talking about building permit. I mean, I could see us asking the, the Army Corps of Engineers to delineate a wetland. But as far as floodplain is concerned, that would be directly attributable to a building permit application instead of to, to property subdivision. Is that correct?
It's a question on the the document.
Part one.
Yeah.
Could be not applicable. I mean, we're not like we're building and nobody's going to build anything as Jerry says.
Do you want to see the new FEMA maps real quick?
Sure.
You found them.
Yep, here's the web viewer here. So based on the address, so these will be the new zones, zone X. This is the property in question here. I'll try to see if I can turn on the parcels. Oh, there's no parcels. Well, for whatever reason, there's no parcels. But this gives you a sense of, here's the centerline of Salmon Creek and then here's how the here's how the new floodplain areas would be delineated.
So the green is the old floodplain and the brown is.
That's a good question. Just two different zones. One is zone X. So the orange there is zone X. Nobody's colorblind on the call. And then the teal color is zone A.
And is that one hundred and seven hundred year floods or?
One percent would be your one hundred year and your point two percent would be your five hundred year.
So it would basically be in both.
I think that's a correct for looking at Seeker. I would, I would say that would be reasonable to put both.
Yes, and it's also fair that the applicant didn't necessarily know that because, yeah, these are the new, these will inform the new firm. So the new flood insurance rate maps that are yet to be published. So just wanted to.
Yeah, I just want to correct that on the part one and.
Yeah.
So I assume the wetland is within those boundaries. Is that right? Or we don't know that?
Not necessarily.
Yeah. Not necessarily, likely, but not necessarily.
We should have the Army Corps of Engineers come down and delineate or flag the wetland. Is that the consensus here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Another approach you could consider is maybe looking at, you know, a buffer along Salmon Creek that may encompass anything along the lower part of the property. You know, so maybe fifty foot or hundred foot buffer along Salmon Creek would maybe give the same intent that you may be looking for.
Instead of using the, the wetland as a boundary, we'll use Salmon Creek as a boundary, which is more, which is already defined. That was just suggesting.
Possibly, yeah. I mean, without visiting the site or knowing what it looks like down there, you know, that could be another way of getting there without having to delineate something that may or may not be there.
So that would be delineated as a no build zone without explaining whether it's wetland or flood zone or anything.
Right, that could be an option. And then if there is a billing permit and you could require a delineation at time of disturbance and if something's, you know, proposed within the wetland, then that's a, that's a different permit at that time.
Doesn't sound like a bad idea.
Well, what's currently shown there, the approximate location of the wetland is approximately a hundred feet from the shoreline.
Right.
Yeah.
So we would potentially say a hundred and fifty feet from the shoreline or two hundred feet from the shoreline.
You're saying for the no build zone?
Right, if we want to encompass what we think is the the wetland plus additional buffer for stormwater remediation.
Yeah, it looks like a hundred and fifty feet gets you up in the four hundred and thirty three years, four hundred and thirty five foot range on the on the topo map and that probably gets you high enough to be away from a lot of it, but maybe not. I mean, as far as no build, not no disturbance. Although I don't really think I see anybody wanting to build down there anything other than maybe a fishing shack or something. I mean, if somebody bought the property for access to Salmon Creek and didn't buy it for residential, I mean, to, then it's possible that something would want to be built closer, as close to the creek as possible.
So you could, you could potentially say no building in that zone except for shed, hundred square foot maximum.
Yep, and a and of course stormwater practices.
But if, if, if a, if an onsite investigation is done and it's greater than the hundred and fifty feet, then we have to go with the onsite investigation. Follow what I mean?
Correct.
If, if, if the feds came out and actually went out there and said, wait a minute, it's actually two hundred feet from the edge, then that two hundred feet would have merit as opposed to our one fifty. Is that correct?
If the board would like to have the wetlands delineated, then we should have Army Corps out and, and proceed from there.
Yeah.
I think that that seems to be the consensus is the question is where are the edge of those wetlands?
And, and if, if this, if this ended, ended up approved and they were viable building lots, Matt, I think potential buyers would want to know where that line is. So it's got to be done sooner or later. If indeed these ended up being marketable.
Okay.
So are we okay with that with a board for now that?
Makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are there any other items on the part one or part two that the board thinks may have a significant impact that you'd like to have the applicant address through either mitigation or gathering further information?
So we're going to have the wetlands delineated and the one hundred and five hundred year floodplain?
I think we have the floodplain info.
I could just share that new FEMA Seneca Watershed Viewer map. Would that be sufficient? For the board?
Yeah.
See if I can get them to add the parcels. I don't know why there's not parcels showing, but.
Yeah, the floodplain is pretty much taken care of in what CJ just showed us, but we'd like to have the wetlands delineated by the Army Corps of Engineers.
And what's, what's.
And I have a contact.
Would you like me to request the surveyors to put with that? So for wherever the wetlands are, what setback would you like? Is it fifty feet or a hundred feet?
Think we'd like to see the wetland first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Matt, I can send you a contact for somebody up in Auburn, a field biologist who can come out and, and do a delineation. Of course, you can also have it done privately, which may be quicker, but I can speak with you more about that.
Okay.
And is that, is that the consensus that we'd like to see the delineation first?
Yes. But I do feel that the fifty feet was suggested and the fifty would be okay for stormwater practices.
Yeah.
Before you do anything with a survey, you're going to have the Army Corps of Engineers delineate the wetland.
Right, right. I was just thinking so I could come with that all set to the next meeting if possible, so.
Yeah, we have a hard time telling whether it be fifty feet or a hundred feet depending on how thick that wetland actually is. Is that true or do we really care how thick? As long as we're a certain specific distance from the wetland, do we really care how thick the wetland is or how far down the, the slope they go? Has anybody got a comment?
Well, if, if they went out and the wetlands was double the size and we had a hundred feet, it may actually, it may actually encroach upon the outline of the building area. So I think we need to know first where the rough perimeter of the wetlands are.
But if we feel sincerely feel that there's a certain buffer necessary for around the wetland, then building area shouldn't really have anything to do with it at that point. I mean, in other words, if we really feel that there needs to be a certain size buffer, we should decide on that certain size buffer regardless of how it affects the property or have I got a hole in my logic there?
No, I understand, but, but I think if you go to other communities, some communities it's twenty feet, some communities it's fifty, some communities it's a hundred, you may even find some at two hundred. Which one is appropriate for that area?
Right, so to make sure there's a rational nexus here between what's being applied, we can specify a buffer with, by the wetland function based on the classification and the delineation that the Army Corps is going to provide. So let's, may, may I just suggest that we proceed with the well and delineation and then from there we could advise the board on a wetland buffer that would be appropriate for the specific circumstance and, and then the wetland function that any impact you're seeking to mitigate an impact on that function. Does that help or make sense?
It does.
Yeah.
And I think that in the past, we have set fifty foot buffers around streams that we felt needed to be protected from building and probably this would tend to be the same thing from the edge of the, of the wetland. But let's see what size the wetland is and see how the, the eggs break here.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, so CJ, where do we want to go then? We're going to put this on hold until we get that in.
Yeah, environmental quality review is technically still open and so I'll work with the applicant to get information to him about either going through Army Corps for delineation or an alternative service to be able to provide that. And then we'll go from there.
Can we approve the, the part one with those two changes?
Just, I would just hold that because you're not making a determination of environmental significance and there may be changes to the part one based on the delineation.
Okay.
Just the suggestion.
Yep, I agree. So Matt, if you can get all that together for the next meeting, that would be great.
Okay, yep. I have it all written down, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we need to open a, thank, Dandy, are you here for the whole meeting or was that?
I think those two were the, the ones I was familiar with. So if there's anything else, I'm glad to stay, but if not, I can chime out.
CJ, was there, did we have anything else we wanted him to, I don't want to waste his time, but if we needed.
Nothing further for him this evening as far as I'm aware.
Thank you, thanks, sir. We appreciate you showing up.
Yes, you're welcome. Take care.
Have a good night. Now we'll need to open a public hearing. Is that next on the vertical minor subdivision?
Yeah, it's omitted from, oh, oh yes, it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, that's correct. I don't see anyone in the waiting room.
I move that we open the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained? Okay, the public hearing is open. Shall we ask for anyone's, any comments from the public?
Sue, have you received any written correspondence?
I have not.
And we have no one in the waiting room?
Nope, just people waiting to speak on projects, including the applicants, including the applicant.
Do we want to leave the public hearing open long enough for us to have some discussion on this or is there any reason not to close it? If there's no public here to be informed.
I think we can leave it open a little while.
We should close it before Seeker.
Okay.
Can't remember why it's just closed.
What exactly are we trying to do here? We're trying to just split one parcel into two?
I think so.
That's it? Yeah.
This one was the one that had to be approved by the village, correct?
Yeah.
And the village has already approved it. Anyone have any comments on this? Project?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Do we want to close the public hearing before we do the environmental assessment? Is that what you said, CJ?
Yeah, and I can't remember exactly why anymore, but yes, the public hearing should be closed before.
I move that we.
The public hearing.
So move.
Did someone second?
I did.
Thought you first. Did you get that, Sue?
Yes, I have Lynn motioned and Tom seconded. I don't know if that's correct or not, but that's what I wrote down.
Okay, do we want to go through the short environmental assessment form?
Wait a minute, we just need to do the all in favor part.
Oh.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Abstained? So carried.
And the applicant is here, if you'd like to.
Have a discussion with him?
Yeah, as, as you.
Yep, we can bring him in now.
Okay, hold on just a moment.
Hi.
Hi, hello there.
Sorry, there was a disconnect for a second. I'm Serena McLeod, I'm here for Mary Hudson subdivision. And I'm in the parking lot of urgent care because my son cut his toe.
Oh, no.
Oh. Well, we hope that he's gonna be all right.
Yeah, they, they did a stitch right through the toenail. It was gross.
Yeah. They leave the toenail.
There once and had him burn a hole in my toenail.
Well, they were, they were afraid he would lose it and, or get it ingrown or something, so they stitched it together and I gotta bring him to a podiatrist.
Oh, boy. So what are we doing here with the subdivision? We're dividing off?
Approximately a little more than one acre from a three plus acre parcel. The, the parcel already has a house on it. And I don't think there's any other plans to further develop.
So the parcel with the house on it is gonna be a flag lot behind the other?
No, I don't think so. There's two parcels. Um, and I mean, excuse me, there's one parcel. She already got a variance to put a second house on that one parcel and now she wants to cut her parcel in half and separate that, that other parcel with the house from the, from her main parcel.
So the new parcel has two hundred linear feet of road frontage and the old one would, or the other new parcel would end up with three hundred sixty one point oh three feet. Do you see the map, Deb?
Um, I, I lost it somewhere.
Yeah, parcel A.
I thought that was the only one that did that.
Two hundred feet by four hundred and sixty feet deep. And that's the one, the downhill one to the west. And then the larger parcel would be to the east.
Yeah.
Three hundred and sixty one by four hundred and sixty. So two acres and three point five three acres.
Right.
And they're actually both already developed.
It just looks like a flag lot to me. I see what it is now.
That's the driveway.
That's the driveway, son of a gun. They all look the same. It seems straightforward.
The, the question that I have looking at the part one for the environmental is, are both houses getting water service from municipal water?
Um, I, yes, I believe so.
And they both have septic, actually.
Yes.
Um, I was confused by question nine about the proposed action meter C to state energy code requirements. This is like NA, isn't it?
You have to assume that they met the energy code at the time they were built.
Okay.
Or they wouldn't have gotten a C of O.
And they would have been a reasonable response there too, I think.
And do they have wetlands there? Well, question thirteen says, yes. They're adjoining wetlands.
No, no.
That was an error.
Is this filled out by the? The mapper?
The mapper?
Not sure, applicant could answer that.
Sorry, what was the question?
Are there any wetlands in this area?
So I had a hard time determining, I, it, I don't know how close they have to be for you to say that it's a wetland. I don't think so, but I, I'm not sure how to determine that.
Did the EAF mapper fill this out?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it says that, that the information on the local and federal wetlands is unreliable or incomplete.
Yeah.
If, if the board likes.
Managing that there's some there, but there could be.
If the board likes, I can just show a quick overview of the mapper. Yeah, hold on just a moment for me here. So this is the county natural resource mapper and I think it's picking up this, this wetland here on the adjoining property here.
Oh, okay.
See that there? Uh, because it's showing up on both the, the county's water resources map and what is that, the NWA, yeah, and the, and the national wetlands map as well. But it's, this is the property in question here.
It looks like on the northwest corner that just barely has something, you see.
Oh, yes, see the little?
Yeah, so it could be picking up just, you know, the, the teeny tiny corner of that.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it could be, could be the one. Yep.
Don't think it really has a way to do with the subdivision.
Nope. Yeah, you can see if you look on the, the plat, look at the upper left of parcel A at the northwest corner. It says, yeah, edge of small pond, four feet plus or minus over property line.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it?
I think so, Dean.
So the part one looks good.
Change the wet ones on there. It doesn't matter.
No, because it does have wetlands.
Yeah, exactly. But it's negligible.
Yeah.
Like you said, number nine, we could put in there NA or, yeah.
What about number twelve? B, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive archaeological site on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? It says yes. What is, I mean, does that affect what we do here?
Do you have any information on that, CJ?
Uh, the applicant may be able to speak to that, but I'm guessing if it's checked yes, it's part of the shipo boundary that grabs a lot of the town. Certainly, if you'd like to ask the applicant to explore that further and she may have a, a response ready, but.
It's already been built, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Just. Yeah, it's probably.
This, this action is not gonna disturb any soil, correct? It's just dividing the line. So I don't think that, that has any merit in what we're looking at today.
Right.
Sue was trying to.
Yeah, I have a quick question. On thirteen B, did you want that marked no so I can put that in the minutes or did you want to just leave that blank?
You're speaking to me, the applicant?
No, actually, I'm speaking to the board to see if, if they want me to include that in the minutes.
I would say.
Yeah, and I would say no, because again, we're just doing this, a lot line subdivision. We're not, there's no physical building or anything proposed to physically alter that.
Right, so the answer would be no then? You're all in agreement?
Yeah.
So the short form, part two has been filled in by staff. We used to read these, right? Was there any reason we had to read them, read each one individually and answer it? Or can we accept what staff has put in if we don't have any, any problems with it?
I'm willing to accept it.
Resolution does indicate that the part two was completed by staff, but of course, any amendments you'd like to make are welcome. It's just a shortcut for you to kind of do some legwork on it.
On a motion for a neg.
Second.
Is it an all in favor or is it, do you need a roll call? Sue?
Okay, so are we doing the neg deck right now?
Yeah, it's both together. I, I put the determination of environmental significance in the preliminary and final plat approval in one resolution, so.
Find the other one.
Perfect, and so we have a motion?
Lynn?
Lynn, okay.
And a second?
Yeah.
Dean.
That was Dean? Sorry, Deb. Sandy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Larry? Oh, I'm sorry, Larry's not here. Deb?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And, and Tom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Usually time goes before Jerry.
I know. I love that.
Okay, so Serena, if you could get us those large racial versions of the plats?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Might have to hook up the cable.
Thing.
And I think Mike Scott might actually have the plats maybe that you dropped off already and so we'll just need to.
Uh, yeah, the town chair, planning board chair signed the plats as well as, I think they probably already signed them in the village, so if you want to have them. They're awaiting your approval to sign. That was their only reservation. So can I tell them that we have your approval and they can sign and send it to you?
That's perfectly fine. Mike is aware, Mike Scott, the code officer, is aware of this.
Right.
Particular action and actually sent over the resolution already, so that's fine. Uh, just ask them to coordinate and we'll see that that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Why you got some ice cream on the way home?
Yeah, make sure he gets a treat.
I like that suggestion. Say hi, Elijah.
Hi.
Hang in there.
Feel better.
He's being very patient here in the car.
And be careful with that chainsaw next time.
Bye now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a public hearing for the Topolaski Callens Road Minor Subdivision, if I pronounce that correctly.
Motion to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
This is your flag lot, Deb?
Oh, thank you. I knew I saw him on somewhere.
Quadruple flag lot.
Love it.
Pack them up.
Not the first.
I do not have any emails at this time for this public hearing.
There's anyone waiting in the?
Nope.
I have a question. Do we, do we have any driveway, does the town have a driveway length that we should be concerned about here?
Five hundred feet with a turnaround, if it's more than that. Has to have a way for fire truck to get in now.
What's the distance?
Five forty-three to the pin at the west side of the buildable parcel. So it's gonna be in excess of five hundred and forty-three feet to the house, probably.
Hello?
It's a five hundred foot driveway, Lynn? Requires some hammerhead or turnaround or cul-de-sac or something?
Yep, let me just grab Lynn.
I think he throws.
Oh, I mean the other Lynn.
Oh.
Come on, any Lynn.
Rainstorm is playing with the internet.
You don't have rain where you are?
I wish.
Brief shower here.
A big one.
Brief.
He's, uh, he's looking it up.
Lynn, do you remember is it five hundred feet?
Yeah, I don't know. That's by the fire chief.
Okay, Lynn is looking it up also.
Came up on yoga farm, remember?
So I think, I think what we have to do is make this, that any development is contingent upon the hammerhead or the turnaround?
In the, for that one lot.
This is a big enough operation.
And the other two lots.
It's the driveway.
There's, um, there's a drainage ditch or stream, I don't know what you want to call it, that right near the border of that property and I was wondering which side of the lots that is on. It's, I don't see that on the plat.
Hmm.
It, it, it looks to me like it's, um, oh, on the, the south border of the, the, the western portion where driveway would go or the accessway there. Looks like it's just over the boundary to the, to the south. You know what I'm saying? If you look at that corridor to the north for the flag lot, that's about eighty feet by five hundred and thirty feet. It appears the drainway is just to the south of that.
Okay, so it's on the, on the non-flagged lot.
Correct, and then it extends back through the flagged lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just wondering how that would, would affect the driveway, but if it's on the other person's lot, I guess that's not an issue. Hello? So you get back to the main parcel later.
Too bad Larry's not here because I see old lane along the south border there and he probably walked to school that way.
It's uphill both ways.
Nice big lot.
And the other two are completely built out. Well, not completely, I guess. But probably.
Yeah, probably the Varga property could still potentially maybe subdivide.
Yeah.
Oh, please.
You could put a tiny house back there in the back.
Oh, yeah.
Or an RV.
Back by the old lane.
We wait. Vacation rental home right there.
Right.
A short term.
Are we waiting on Mr. Day? Was he going to give us a clarification on the hammerhead?
Yeah, I was asking him about it. He was looking it up. Hold on just a moment.
All right, I don't see the wetlands on this one. Dean, maybe you can help me out there.
There, it's probably again that dotted line where it's coming through.
Oh.
There's probably wetland kind of on either side all the way to that center line of drainage.
Yeah, just the little ditch that they have there.
That'd be my guess. But again, it's probably, yeah, federal and not, not the DC would be my guess, but
Well.
Maybe CJ could bring that up.
Oh, wait, what happened? I just got back.
We're talking about wetlands again.
Oh, okay, because I was on appendix D. Yes, so the fire code section that Lynn just brought up, here we go. Let me just show you. Here's the info.
Has everybody else been saying in and out?
No.
It's the range.
So yes, a hundred and fifty-one to five hundred feet has to be twenty feet. And then five oh one to seven fifty is twenty-six feet with the hundred and twenty-foot hammerhead. And then this would, this is required as a condition as well that it would have to meet, estimate uniform code.
Yeah.
Right, so we would make that part of the approval process, right?
Maybe, I don't remember if I added, and I'll have to look at the resolution.
Certainly possible to do all that.
So does our twenty, I mean, they'd have to do that as part of the building.
Building permit.
Yeah.
But because our twenty, twenty-six foot wide driveway, do we require a sixty-foot easement there? I mean, sixty feet wide for a twenty-foot wide driveway, right? On a flag lot? Don't we require that that be sixty feet wide minimum?
Right, well, this is seventy-seven and a half at the road and it's, it's eighty feet at the point that it widens.
I wonder, I wonder if being longer and requiring a twenty-foot wide or twenty-six foot wide driveway instead of a twenty-foot wide, does that require a bigger easement or bigger area? In other words, would it require more than seventy-seven feet instead of the sixty foot we usually do? I haven't ever heard of that. That's why I'm asking. Lynn, are you there?
I just got back. Is everybody correct?
Okay, my, my question is, we have a, we have a more than five hundred feet here to, of the driveway. So we're going to require a hammerhead. But it also requires the driveway to be twenty-six feet wide instead of twenty, twenty feet. Now, do we require larger area on each side of it more than the sixty foot that we usually require?
I seem to be crashing in and out of Zoom. Can you hear me now?
I could hear Andy echo.
Hello?
Hello?
I tried my phone when the computer died, so.
Yep, looks like you froze up again.
CJ, are you understanding Jerry's question?
I think so. Are you asking for whether we should be requiring additional length for the, the flag pole of the lot?
The additional width.
Width.
In other words, is seventy-seven foot wide, wide enough for to, we don't, I guess I'm asking if we have any restrictions on the width? If the width of the driveway goes to twenty-six feet instead of the normal twenty? You just read to us something that said if it's less than five hundred feet, a twenty-foot driveway is what is required. If it's more than five hundred feet, it widens out to a twenty-six foot driveway. Do we need more than the sixty feet we usually require for the twenty, twenty footer if you go to twenty-six feet? We don't usually require sixty feet?
We don't usually, the question is, we don't usually require sixty feet for the flag pole?
We don't?
Ah.
Seems to me that we always are talking about sixty feet, a sixty-foot right away for the driveway for a twenty-foot driveway.
Only with utilities, and I think it's less than that. I want to say it's thirty feet, I think.
Right, yes, that's what the land use ordinance and subdivision regulations say.
Oh, it's thirty feet. So if you have a twenty-six footer, it's going to be more than thirty feet? If your driveway is twenty-six feet wide?
Pretty big driveway.
Oh, it's, the code says that she just read said it had to be twenty-six feet wide if it's more than five hundred feet long.
On the five oh one, yep.
Yeah, I think the sixty feet that we normally reference is if you're doing a development.
For a town road.
Right, yeah, they have seventy-seven, more than seventy-seven feet of width. So.
To be more than adequate.
Yeah.
For a driveway. And ditching.
And utility. There has to be a way for an emergency vehicle. I didn't know it had to be two lanes. I knew there had to be a pull-off to let an emergency vehicle by every five hundred feet. That's what we did down on Flynn's with Dieter Shagen. But things may have changed.
Well, with eighty feet of width, they would certainly have room for that.
Yep.
Correct. But it's punishing to put in twenty-six feet of stone driveway.
I think.
The applicant may want to rethink how they're configuring their flag lot then, or is that what you're saying?
I think they can, I, I believe there's a possibility for a pull-off. I think, Lin Day, we may have to interpret that because that's crazy. No, I think it's just a normal-sized driveway and a thirty-foot right away. That's the minimum. Yeah. It's a hammerhead at five hundred feet. Somewhere to pull off and turn around, and so the truck can turn around. That's it.
Can you put that back up again, CJ?
Uh, sure. Oh, Lynn's here. Anything to add on this?
He's leaving us.
Gotta go put a mask on.
Brief appearance here. Here we go. This is the appendix D.
So it's five hundred and one to seven hundred and fifty feet. It requires twenty-six feet wide and a hundred and twenty-foot hammerhead. A sixty-foot wide or a ninety-six foot diameter cul-de-sac. But again, all of this is under the building permit. That's not necessarily under subdivision, right?
This is uniform code, right?
So it's not really something we have to pay attention to.
Not tonight anyways, right?
Well, the building permit would pick this up, I think.
Yeah, suffice it to say there's enough space to do this.
Correct.
Okay. And we've got a short form. Let's see, we open a public hearing on this one?
I think you did. Yes, the pub, the public hearing is open.
No.
No.
And so do, and we have no public here still, right?
Well, I can't tell what this person, there's somebody in the waiting room with five one eight area code. And my guess is that they're for one of these other projects, but I could just admit them and see.
Make sure.
Is that good? Oh, that's, that's not Sean.
Uh, there's somebody five one eight. Oh, hold on.
On.
Lynn is here for you.
Sorry about that, but any driveway over five hundred feet in length and less than twenty feet in width shall be provided with turnouts along the driveway that are minimum twenty feet wide in width and length of fifty feet. That's what we did down at Whitetail Crossing.
That's what we did at Dieter Shagen too, right?
That's Whitetail Crossing.
Oh.
That sounds right to me.
Yeah.
So.
Not twenty-six.
Twenty-six is in appendix D. But this was actually an old supplement, two thousand seventeen supplement.
So this would be taken care of under the building permit process, right, Lynn?
Yes.
So it's that something, all we have to do is make sure there's enough room in the flag for whatever you need to do.
Correct. Because you had to put a sign and job there also for the turnout. Which is what we did down at Deager Hagens and Whitetail Crossing.
By the way, it's good to see you.
Thank you. Not really paying a lot of attention, so.
All right, do I hear, did we find out if anybody's here?
Uh, we have this five one eight person. We could just admit them real quick and see what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, more of that? Yeah. Hello?
Hello, are you, what, what project are you here for?
For Cargill.
For Cargill?
This is Marta. Yeah.
Okay, we just have a public hearing open and you're not identified. So we wanted to make sure that you weren't here for a public hearing.
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank, well, you're here for Cargill and we'll be getting to that next.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Now we can do the short form. Which has been filled out by staff and I assume it's reflected in the resolution that that's the case.
Hope so.
So five A should probably be yes.
Well, it does say prepared by the planning board. So if you want to change that to planning staff, that's fine.
I don't think it matters. I think that we'll probably come up with the same answers. Five A should be yes. The proposed action is permitted under the zoning regulation. That's true.
Number nine should probably be NA since there's no building going on.
Anything else?
No, I don't have anything.
So that's part one and part two. Anyone have any comments on that?
Nope.
No.
The motion for a neg deck.
Second.
Who do you need to do a roll call?
It's all in the same resolution also. I batched them together, the negative declaration and the preliminary and final approval. Just wanted.
Everybody read the resolution?
Oh, yes.
Are there any comments?
Oh.
There's not even a typo, Deb?
There is, there's someone, somewhere in there.
It hid.
Okay, Sue, do you need to call the roll?
Yes. Andy? Yes. Lynn?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
It's that time of night.
And I haven't had dinner yet.
Oh.
Okay, next are we at the Cargill?
Cargill.
Cargill?
It's a lot of time.
All right, would you like to admit the applicants or soon to be?
Now, this is fairly straightforward.
Uh, this is just Scott's plan, just to introduce the project, introduce themselves to the planning board.
Yes.
I anticipate that they will probably need a height variance for the building. Given how tall it's proposed.
They don't have to come from the ZBA.
That's correct. Yep, and they have not yet applied for that, I don't believe, but I'll admit them and they can kind of give you a little bit of a overview of the project, right?
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. I hope you're all hanging out okay. Had quite the evening already from your agenda.
Is, calm is Dean Melber also on your team?
Uh, yes, Darren is also in our team. Yeah.
Okay, I'll admit them as well.
All right, do you want to give us a, an overview of what you're planning?
Yeah, it'd be my, my pleasure. And I'll try to keep this short again, knowing that you've had a very long evening. And really, the project is not really that, that complex. So just as a.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was not able to hear the question.
Well, I think that was some cross talk coming in from another respondent.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. So I'm Sean Lenzkin, the facility manager for Cargill, the Q to mine, last in New York. And what we are proposing or asking to do is to put a covered storage building over our lower salt storage pad. The primary reason for this is to effectively reduce our environmental impact. reduce our environmental impact or the potential environmental impacts associated with us handling and storing of salt at the facility. So the discharge of the salts from the conveyor belt would be encompassed within the building structures, and then as well the salt that we generally have on the lower pad from an operational context is, is very, very seldom that we get to a point where we actually have an opportunity to tarp and cover that salt that's on those pads in order to reduce the amount of stormwater generation that's associated with us storing salt or handling salt at that facility. So primarily the, the reasons would be to reduce any impacts from, from dust emissions from the discharge at the conveyor belt, and then also to reduce any stormwater brine generation associated with the storage of the salt that's on the pad. You can see from the renderings, it is, the, what the pad is about 200 foot wide by 600 foot long, so it would not be a small building, and it would be taller than what the, is currently allowed by, it would be a 75 foot tall structure.
What's the roof? Is it a metal roof?
I believe, and I can certainly let the engineering group speak to it now, but I believe it's, it is metal truss systems and a fabric type of, of roof cover system.
You don't make any delineation between the other zones and the IR zone, right, as far as building height? Is that true, CJ?
That's correct. The town, other than things like steeples and agricultural buildings and things like that, have a limit of 35 feet.
Regardless of. So we have a.
Yep, it's uniform throughout the entire town. The 35 feet is it's, other than the agricultural buildings, steeples, and a couple other things.
This will have to go to the ZBA for a, and we could send a resolution along with it or a comment along with it saying that we, we find this to be acceptable?
The planning board could, you know, certainly share their sentiments on the project with the zoning board. Of course, they're not binding on that board, but.
I think we've done that before.
I'm wondering how, how large that mound of salt is that exists now. That's a pretty big mountain of salt they have.
Yeah, we have three, we have three pads that are approximately the same footprint, so.
Yeah.
The other two pads, however, were able to stack and cover, and they're only really exposed for about a one month period while we're stacking, and then however long it takes us to offload them during the winter time. So their, their, their influence as far as when it's actually uncovered is, is significantly less than what the lower pad. Why we would like to start there with, with that building. Now, just for, for reference sake, again, for those that I'm sure have, have seen or worked in the mine, I did look at a couple of the heights of some of the other structures. The T3 building, which is where, where we house our bagging facilities, that's slightly over 42 foot high, as is the T4 building is about the same height. Our number one head frame is 145 foot tall, that's where all the salt production is taken out of the mine. The number three head frame is about 65 foot tall, and the bulk loading tower where we load trucks and rail is, is close to 100 foot tall. So there are other structures, whatnot, that are, that are well over the, the limit. And when you're just dealing with a facility and size of the pad of this size and complexity, it's, it certainly goes along with the territory, I guess, but again, certainly are hoping to do this so we can, so we can further minimize our environmental impacts and run off to the weight.
Sean, will you have to, will you have to alter the catch basin from the snow or rain runoff?
I don't believe so. That would be, again, a question, I believe we have some of the representatives from Jacobs Engineering that's, that is on the call as well, that might be able to answer some of the more specific design criteria. So Melissa or anybody else?
I can speak to that if you would like, Sean. Just with the catch basin, the catch basin that's on the lower pad at the moment, that would still be maintained within the lower pad, which would then be, unless inside the new shed building, and then from the exterior or anything coming off the roof would then be tied in downstream of the system. So there is a, a brine collection system that monitors on site before anything goes to the outfall. So that catch basin would still run through that system, which would be monitored.
So you're only talking about the roof system then, nothing else?
Right, so the roof would shed, would shed the water, and there, so it would prevent us creating any brine from, from the, from the moisture interacting with, with the stored salt. Sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Sean, this doesn't directly relate to this particular project, but I'm curious, do you have plans for maybe other two pads at some point?
Yeah, it's, it is possible. At the cost of $5 million per pad, I would say it would be, you know, something that would have to be dependent upon the, the economic impacts and stuff of that. Again, that's why we're starting with the, with the lower pad first, because it, it has the highest potential for influence, just due to its inherent nature. This is a significant investment, obviously.
Yeah, I think it's great you're doing this.
Yeah.
What's, what's a useful life with a $5 million cost of that fabric? Does that need to be replaced every 20 years or 10 years?
This is Darren from Jacobs. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, the building's life is about 50 years. Roof membrane is 20 to 25 years, just like you guessed.
Wow.
So it would replace, you know, if the building lasts 50 years, it would be replaced at the 25, the liner.
So can you speak a little bit to the section view that we're looking at of the concept? So I see a steel truss, it looks like you've got a, a concrete pure foundation underneath each truss, you've got a stored salt pile, and you have kind of something at the bottom of that. Is there like interior?
Yeah, so.
High downs or?
Yeah, so that's the 40 foot pile of saw. It's 200 feet wide in a view that you're looking at, and the, to keep the snow, that, that roof liner at that slope of roof, that's what keeps the snow from piling, right, so it just slides off. Not that the design of the roof, it still assumes there's snow on it, but I'm just saying that it's at that four on 12 is where the snow will actually fall off the roof. So it's, it's about 75 feet high.
So you show something inside, inside the shed at the bottom of the edges of the salt pile?
Is that the push wall?
Right.
There's a small five foot push wall, so, so we're going to put a concrete wall, a small push wall on the, on the interior kind of perimeter there to prevent the loaders from, from, from going beyond where we'd like them, and then coming in contact with the structure.
Okay, that, that's what I was wondering, what you were showing there.
And also there's a question about stormwater requirements. I assume you may probably already have a speedies permit for this project, and probably many, but can you say how, what changes you'd anticipate?
Well, we do, we have a, a speedy permit. Actually, we're currently under review, request for information from the New York State PNC. We're, we're providing that information, but with the full expectation that our, our permit limits are probably soon going to be changed. So that's, we are currently operating underneath the approved one until the, the full RFI and review goes, and then basis wherever that, the outcome of that, the RFI and the DEC review will, will ultimately to what we expect will be changed or lowered discharge limits, which this would, this, to be honest with you, I think is, is a pretty big strategic necessity for us to be able to achieve that anyway.
So the building itself would be enclosed three sides and mostly open on the south side or some doors there?
Yeah, mostly open on the, on the south side. And that, to just allow for the truck traffic to come in and out of the building.
And the membrane would be a white color, clear?
Yeah, I don't know, I'm sure color will be a consideration, of which I believe we would want to try to go more of an earth tone. We have the, the current T4 building there, which is stark white, and when you're out on the lake, it, it is quite visible or on the other side. So I think we've had some internal conversations, I believe there's options as far as the color of the fabrics.
And your conveyor belt that'll load or deposit the salt is going to be within the building?
Yes, or within a structure that'll be attached to the building. So again, that's one of the primary needs was, was to encapsulate that as well. We tried three different shoots. Unfortunately, in our environment, it is just extremely difficult to find something that will, that will withstand a such a corrosive environment and be, and be reliable for us as far as to control the, the dust discharge. So I think we're at that point where the best thing for us to just, it would be to ensure that it's, it's covered and captured.
Are there any other questions? Do you have any questions of us?
I do not. I appreciate again everything you've been, helped walk us through this process so far, and I guess, I guess we'll just wait to see, would the next step be to make a formal request to the town board for approval?
Building board.
Yeah, you're going to need to get a variance for the building height.
Okay.
And then I think CJ, they'll need to come back here afterwards, is that true?
Yeah, they can apply essentially simultaneously to do site plan approval and area variance, can apply essentially together for that. I'm still not sure who would be the lead agency for environmental review of the project, but I assume that it might be DEC. So if the board is comfortable with that, I'm happy to reach out to Department of Environmental Conservation and then just seek, you know, what their thoughts are, at least informally on it. But if you would prefer to make a declaration of lead agency and formally make that statement, that can be done at the next meeting.
Actually, I'm happy to. Yeah, yeah, sorry CJ, actually we rejected the DEC to verify this, and again, they, our mine and information permit or any of that processes does not cover like these, like the, the general building infrastructure or stuff on the surface, so I believe the tunnel lands would be.
Okay, yeah, that's what I figured, but it was just kind of a courtesy to just make sure we're coordinating all agencies, interested and involved agencies.
We see for verification and got that verification from that.
Oh, okay, excellent, yeah, and please forward any correspondence to that effect, and that way I can share that with the board. But yes, they'll be applying for formal site plan approval and for the area variance for the height. It might be wise for them to come back to you next time to inform, with the formal application, and then that way you could then in turn make a recommendation, if you wished, to the zoning board of appeals to just explain your sentiments on the project, why you might make that recommendation, however informally, and go from there.
I don't have any questions. How about any of the folks from Jacobs or Melissa?
I do not have any questions. I do not have any questions.
Okay, I, I just have a quick question. For the seeker review, this is going to be an, I anticipate that this will be an unlisted action.
Probably, that would be my guess. I'd look, I could take a quick look at the type one, type two list for you, but it's probably not, not on either of those.
Any other questions?
Yeah, sorry, I just had a question. Just, I think Lynn Day is probably the right contract, contact CJ, just regarding fire code requirements for the site. You'd be the best person to reach out to.
That's correct, yeah, and he had mentioned, he's seen at least the preliminary plans.
Okay.
So yes, yes, definitely ask him anything about uniform code.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, and then just one other quick question. So for the seeker, if unlisted action, we will be preparing, do you anticipate that we will, we will be preparing the short environmental assessment form?
Yeah, typically the planning board does accept the short environmental assessment form, part one, as adequate for an unlisted action. Of course, you know, using the EF mapper is really nice, because it does, you know, pull all that state collected data and feeds that and fills that, prefills that in for you, as you well know. But of course, if the board does want additional information, you know, lead agency can ask for the full form if they desire, so. Can't hurt to run both on the AF mapper.
Okay.
Go ahead, turn everything, I'll turn everything off.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time as well.
And we look forward to seeing you again.
Okay, have a nice evening, everyone. Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hugo Lake National Bank.
Okay, would you like me to admit the applicants here to speak about it?
Please.
All right.
George? Hello, George.
Hello, guys.
You want to explain to us what you've got going on here?
Hey, Sarah? Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't know whether Chris may be, may be joining us also, CJ, Delta.
Yep, Chris is admitted. I can ask him to unmute here and see if he would, he would join us.
Yep, I'll, I'm here. Good evening. I'll stay muted until I need to back up George.
Okay, so a week ago, I was hired by Hugo Lake National Bank. Where's the share screen? Now I lost it.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you, George.
Okay, this new, this new way of doing meetings drives me nuts, anyways.
You could share a screen, George, if you want.
I, I've got one, yes, I do have one to show you. So about a week ago, I started on this project, the bank had hired La Makia out of the water, out of Wisconsin to find a site, prepare stuff, and they in turn hired Delta to do a survey and to do some site stuff. So you've got a package that was submitted by Delta with the renderings from La Makia. What the bank is proposing to build at the corner of Franklin and Trep Hammer, which would be the south end of Andy's site, he'll sell that to them. Basically, a two story, there's a two-story center section, and it looks kind of like a lodge. It's timber frame or laminated lumber, and it's a small bank, Hugo Lake National Bank, their main headquarters is in Union Springs. They currently have a branch in Aurora, and this would complete the east side at the south end of the lake. So what is being proposed is, it's a little, several lending offices, and you'd have two stations, and then when you look at. And then when you look at renderings, the one rendering is from the southwest, the corner of Franklin and Trippham, where you can see there's a structure back there with, looks like a couple of low ATMs, but they're actually cash recyclers. So that's, that's the drive-in, the drive-in teller, but there's no connection necessarily to the bank. La Makia originally had a number of parking spaces and when we looked at it, when I looked at it and talked with the bank and talked with Delta, it's like we got an awful lot of parking and the idea of catch basins and stuff to take the water just seems like it's a little bit over. So over the last couple of days, we've looked, I'm going to share a, um, possible new, a possible new layout that's a little different than what we showed, where we have less parking. Um, the idea, we know we're going to have to do stormwater. It's not currently shown. But the idea would be to trick surface drain water to the edges and probably put bio swells in to pick up the runoff and perhaps out front because the site grades from east to west, the low part being right at the Franklin, Trip Hammer, any kind of retention area that would be located there. Uh, we also show, we're going to need a septic system. I've shown one for a three-bedroom house, which is more than what we probably need on this site because we're only talking two toilet rooms and a mop sink and a break room sink. So it may be smaller, but there's obviously room to septic system on there plus a retention or a replacement. Asking that he be granted an, an easement, a right-of-way easement, if he ever wanted to get back into the back of his property. So on this particular parcel on this that I'm sharing with you, be on the right side. There's like a dotted spot. That's 10 foot wide. That's just to give Andy the right to take lawnmower or whatever back in to get behind his property. To the right of that easement is, is currently wooded, um, and that actually has a right-of-way or an easement to the telephone company, which I don't think, Chris is in the middle of talking with lawyers about, there's a ton of easements on this property, trying to figure out which ones are still in effect and exactly what do they mean. But that parcel probably could never be built on. So that acts as a wooded buffer to the residential property, uh, to the east. One thing that La Makia showed is when he came out of the drive-in teller area, he came straight forward onto Franklin. I was concerned that Andy would want vehicular access back at the existing driveway, um, which he sensed this afternoon said that's not the case. We would like to take traffic, the primary traffic, the in and out traffic off of Trip Hammer and essentially the existing curb cut. But I'd like to be able to put traffic from the drive-in tellers and stuff onto Franklin. And the reason is when you look at what was originally shown, the drop, there's a driveway that runs right across. So the bank sits in an island of asphalt. And it would be nice to have the bank building front and basically like the park-like structure or park-like character that's there. Whether that willow tree, willow tree you can see in our plan shows down on the corner and a couple of big pine trees. The willow tree we'd really like to take down. I know it's huge and it's old, but it's a weed waiting to fall.
Yeah.
It would be nice to put something, you know, plant some other stuff, but plant that up. And then I would like at this point, based on what I found out at four o'clock this afternoon, like to be able to come straight on through onto Franklin's, you know, running due south and basically not have all the pavement going to the existing driveway cut that was there when the trailer was there. Um, lighting, we don't show, but we'd use similar lights, probably exactly the same lights. There may be a different color is what we use on the adjacent property. I don't think there's any complaints. They give good light on the parking lot and there's not a lot of glare. Um, we are looking at putting a generator in part because part of the second floor in the two-story space at the back, we're going to have a stair going up there and they want to use that as an emergency data center. So to have a generator and we'd have a propane tank as backup for the generator. Um, but basically all their records currently, they keep their records in Aurora and it's really small as backup from their, their main facility, Union Springs. And I'd like to use this as their backup for records. Um, bank staff is anticipated at first there'll be a bank manager and two tellers with intermittent people coming down as lending officers. I saw that Scott Backcock was on a moment or a little bit ago. And he would come down from Union Springs, but as the, the business group, they could conceivably have, and platform officers have the, uh, the offices along the west side that would be lending officers. And then there's also a conference room that could hold, um, large conferences or presentations. This particular La Makia thought about a fireplace and they show up, like there's a big fireplace. We're still talking about having the fireplace. But in electric fireplace, because obviously we're not going to burn wood and we could probably do propane. We can't do gas, but it'd be easier just to have it electric. So in the front section that's glass, there's like a waiting area and a lounge. That's a little different idea as a bank.
George, have you thought about buffering directly to the south? We heard a lot of, um, neighborhood, um, complaining and, um, comments regarding buffering Andy's building that he just built. Um, so in addition to buffering on the east side of this property, you know, there's residences directly across the street to the south.
Correct. Yes. Um, one of the things, I think there's a 50-foot easement, didn't they say, on the overhead line that runs up Franklin Street? I believe. And one of the questions, what we're trying to find out is what are you allowed to do in that? That easement. No, you can't have a building. And if I look up and down, I know you can have parking because we've got parking underneath those easements. But what would they say about trees? Cause if you come down, um, Trip Hammer, right before you get to Franklin Street, there were a bunch of those big pine trees. Somebody's gone along and really chopped those back.
But you could put in some ornamental trees that wouldn't get too tall there and.
Yeah. I mean, what you really, what they probably really like would be some conifers or something that wouldn't lose leaves. It would, you know, be a year-round buffer. And then the site plan that I'm showing you right now, one of the things I was wondering is how much can I plant between the pavement and Franklin?
George, I can jump in and speak to that a little bit. That, that dark line where he's got the, uh, that's the, the overhead line shown, correct, George?
Yes.
Running along Franklin, the easement, the big easement in question is runs parallel with that. And it's actually, it's a hundred feet wide. It's 50 foot either side of that power line and 50 feet basically takes it about to the face, the south face of that proposed building. So there's not, there's not a lot of wiggle room with the building. And, and as you've mentioned it, it, we need to have the, the lawyers, they're still researching, you know, what is allowed? Is it vegetation? Is it, is it parking? You know, is it stormwater? That'll give us a better idea where we can cite what, you know, and if there is vegetation allowed, uh, you know, is there a height restriction on it? Is there a, a type restriction on it?
I think NICE has a list of appropriate trees, uh, or shrubs to put under a power line if you talk to them.
And, and the lawyers, the lawyers are doing that. They are working uh, with that. And also to find out what it, it is a recorded easement. So, you know, what specifically is allowed and isn't allowed by that easement. Is, God knows how long it's been around, you know, being a hundred feet wide. It's, it's got a little bit more precedence than, you know, some of the narrower 25 to 34 ones.
Incorrect. Me if I'm wrong, but I think that the, uh, the fellow from the housing development over there was complaining when the, um, the rooftop units were going to be on top of that building. And once those rooftop units went away, the complaint would have gone away. He was specifically having a problem with the rooftop unit.
Yeah, Jerry, he wasn't, he actually lives up, whatever the street is up, off to the right. But he was worried about them. We changed over to the mini splits and we'll probably stay with the mini splits. Because we're definitely, you know, why it's a small building, about 2,500 square feet or a little less footprint plus about four or 500 square foot off. I definitely need a zone for the data room has to be on one, its own complete system. And we've got a tall space. We'll probably have three zones in this building. It's going to be easier to do with many splits. And so you'll have small compressors and.
The generator is going to be the big noise maker there.
Yeah. And the generator, the generator, La Makia was looking at a 60 KW diesel generator and that would.
How?
Well, they, they were figuring, they were saying this little bank needed a 400 amp three-phase service. So I'm thinking, I, I think that Keegan Lake National Bank is going to start, you know, mining cryptocurrency there, but.
I put, I put a 400 amp three-phase service in to feed a whole hotel.
Yeah, no, exactly. So I think what, what I'm looking at is at most maybe a 22 KW is generic like you'd see on a large house. So, and that's how I can feed with propane. So it'll be a lot quieter.
Yep.
But still you're going to want some, some buffering there from that generator because it'll turn on and test itself off. And then if it starts running, um, unless the neighbors are allowed to come over and tap into the electricity if the power's off, they may complain about it.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I showed some shrubs around there and it would definitely would buffer around the generator and the propane tank there. So you don't really see that.
Some sort of wall might actually direct the sound back over into your other project and away from the residence.
I think that's what Kelly, Kelly was talking about doing is putting a fence around it. We just got to go through it and decide. Cause the other thing that I'd like to do is I, we just haven't had, I haven't had a chance to talk with Chris in length, but to get the dumpster out of there and get her over. So you're not walking, getting your exercise, your 10,000 steps, getting out of the bank to the dumpster.
Yeah, the dumpster screen might be able to, to, uh, screen the noise of the generator and send it away.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Yeah.
I'm looking at, as I said, a septic system. We've got a septic system next door with a pump tank. My guess is that at most we would do this. Chris, you can talk, you talked briefly with one of the engineers in the house and they were thinking it wouldn't, that we could conceivably have a septic system that isn't this convoluted.
It, it, taking a quick look at, you know, what's available, you know, publicly available for the soil data without actually doing the, the onsite perk test. It, it's favorable soil uh, out there, which is a, a nice change. Um, if that is the case, then we're looking at a, a conventional system with a dousing station. The, um, I guess one other thing to mention, uh, the generator, depending on the size has, uh, the larger generator you get, the bigger the spatial requirements are to keep it from, from other things. So once we've got that generator selected, um, you know, the team will be able to, you know, potentially get both of that, that and the dumpsters, maybe in one, one unit, easy access for servicing for both of them and emptying the dumpsters out with the trucks that come in.
I've, I've got a concern about the, uh, traffic dumping onto Franklin. Franklin is a residential street pretty much. And you're going to have traffic going east out of that parking area. You're going to have a lot more traffic in that residential area.
I've, I've thought about that. I mean, but I also think unless you're from Lansing, do you know where you're even going to end up?
No.
When you go up there, I mean, I drove it today because I was curious because I can't think in my own mind where Franklin dumps out on. And it dumps up there on, off by the, uh.
Armstrong.
Yeah. What is, I forget the name of the road, uh.
Armstrong.
Armstrong, yeah, right.
But if, if you're, if you're headed to Groton or if, if you're headed south even, you're probably going to take, you're going to go east on Armstrong and then head into the subdivision as opposed to trying to get out on the Trip Hammer Road from Franklin. So I think you're going to dump a lot of traffic into a residential neighborhood. With that coming off onto Franklin.
That's, that's the big question that I've got from, for tonight is are we going to be permitted to exit onto Franklin? Cause otherwise we got to loop around when you come in, where are those westernmost parking spaces? That becomes driveway and you, you drive around in a circle. He either come into the, the islands for the, uh, remote tellers or the other way and come back around to go back out to Trip Hammer.
So at the, at the Duncan and the Quickie Mart, up at the corner, they, they have a traffic pattern there with, you know, no outlet onto Pruville Road, correct?
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm wondering if, um, if we can direct track where it comes out. So there's no left turn when you come out onto Franklin, that you'd be required to take a right turn?
I mean, that's, I, that's, I would sign it that way. And you could sign it, but there's got to be enforcement because somebody's going to claim they couldn't read.
Yeah. And, and. Well, the other is the insurance situation as well. If you tell people where to go and they have an accident, we've, we've heard that from people. I don't know if it's BS or not.
I'm, I'm just wondering what other board members think about the traffic going onto Franklin? If it's a good thing or it's something we should, we really has no merit. Any other board members?
I don't think we want to dump traffic out on the Trip Hammer. If you're going to have a lot of traffic there, it's going to back up badly trying to get on the Trip Hammer many times during the day because it's so close to that traffic light.
Well, Andy's spot has the same situation.
Right. I wonder how that works. Do you know how that works, George?
No, I mean, I would expect at five o'clock, it's probably a problem.
Although Andy's spot probably doesn't have the through traffic that a, uh, well, they have a, a, um, ATM over there, but it probably doesn't have the through traffic that something like this might have at certain times of your day.
No, I mean, right now Andy's building is essentially vacant. Uh, I mean, Dr. and Young Brothers are in there, but you know, they're not high traffic right now. Um, the only thing I'm thinking is if we came out on trip, if you came out on Franklin, you're roughly 200 feet from the intersection.
I like the idea of the no left turn and can't you configure the driveway so it'd be hard to, I, I just know in Louisiana, when they don't want you to turn away, they configure the road. So you'd have to go overall practically over the curb to turn in the direction you want to. So can't you configure it? So.
Angle the curb cut?
Yeah.
You definitely can put a bit, a bigger sweep on the west side, which makes it easier to turn in a real tight sweep on the east side.
Well, we have actually angled it coming out so that it almost, as she suggested, it, it forces you to make a right turn and you can make a left, but you're jeopardizing the oil pan of your car and doing so.
Now the, the driveway that you showed right here, didn't you say that that's going to be fixed up a little bit? That you're not going to.
Yeah, the driveway I showed originally, as I said, originally when Andy was talking about getting a right-of-way easement, I thought he wanted to be able to get a vehicle back in off of Franklin for whatever, and back to the back of his property. But when I talked to him this afternoon, we said, oh, no, no, I just, I want to be able to get a tractor, a lawnmower, who knows? I just want the ability to cross the bank's property over to Franklin. So where we showed the driveway right now, that's the existing curb cut. When the trailer was there, that's where they came brown, had the garage pad. So we would basically abandon that.
Go straight through from the drive-through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, uh, the, the exit there is it, if the car's coming out, the lights are facing what, what's right beyond it to the south? Is there a house there?
Yeah, there's a house on the corner.
Right.
At whose garage is angled 45 degrees facing back to the southwest. But there's a house on the corner and then you're pretty much residential the rest of the way, all of them.
I'm saying as a, as a car comes out the driveway in the evening and the lights, would the lights be shining from the exit into a house or into a garage area or into undeveloped area?
Uh, it's wooded and there's a garage on that side of the house.
Okay. So it's.
It's, you, I know there's a garage, whether it covers the whole back of the house, I don't know.
Okay, but I'm saying the lights wouldn't shine directly into the house. Every car that's exiting in the evening hours. You follow what I mean?
I don't believe so. I don't know, Chris, you, can you, is it possible to spot the house that's there on, um, the other side?
Uh. Yeah, if I can get my screen back.
Want me to stop sharing or?
Stop sharing just for a minute.
Okay.
And we, we sent out notices, the town did to the neighbors about this. CJ, is that correct?
Not yet, I don't believe.
No, this project is just in sketch plan. This was an opportunity for them to.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm curious on what the neighbors are gonna, their comments from the neighbors there.
Okay, understood. Uh, would you like to pose for public hearing at the next meeting?
Yes.
Google map shows that it's pretty well wooded on that property just to the south, but. You know, the trees are pretty mature. So I'm not sure what the understory looks like and, you know, they may want. To have some additional buffer there from, um, something commercial right across the street. In other words, they might want the, uh, the bank to help them, you know, plant a hedge along there or something like that.
I think the more buffering you have, the better off you'll be to appease the neighbors because a year ago, we were saying this isn't gonna be built.
You're right.
So I guess we will not say that again.
Beware.
Uh, let me share my screen. I've got it up on street view. So let's, this is about where. That driveway would be coming out. This is what would be across the street. So there's actually, there is the canopy, the canopies on that side are cut up. You know, there is the potential for some. Or some light there, but you know, maybe that's something that can be mitigated with some screening.
Or the driveway could be at an angle.
And, 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 and that too, if that driveway were to, you know, take a 30-degree swing towards Trip Hammer. Instead of coming straight into Franklin.
That would keep people from turning left onto Franklin.
Right.
A lot of driveways coming on the Trip Hammer.
Yep. Not much from.
Enough, we might get another traffic lane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody's gonna love that. Now I think you better buy another house, just buy that and put another bank on the other side. Are you gonna bring the change machine from the bank down to Lansing?
This is, this is.
It's fantastic.
Does that make or break?
Uh, I take the Lions Club cakewheel money up there and it doesn't cost anything and they, they give you a check and they're wonderful people. The change machine's the best. Even you find all your buttons and.
Well, this is Scott from, from the bank and yes, I mean, well, I'm just writing that down as you speak, so. We can arrange that if it helps matters.
You're an all-star. Thank you.
And just so you folks know, we're, we're fine with, uh, you know, the recommendations and it's always been our plan to have that. Uh, if possible, exit only onto Franklin. And if it is a right-hand turn only, we're fine with that. Uh, the, the traffic back there would be limited to folks that are using the, what will be ITMs. Um, they're a little more advanced in ATMs. Uh, we plan on having expanded hours, which would hopefully maybe mitigate the, the sort of rush that, that you sometimes see. Uh, for folks to get in the drive-up before the, the close of business. Um, and then other than that, the employee parking lot is on that side as well. If they choose to use that as an exit only as well. So. Um, we have thought about that in terms of, you know, the mitigation of the effects on, uh, the, the traffic onto Franklin, so.
All right. Well, thank you much and we'll see you back here, I guess, when you have something flushed out a little more and drunk to his hand to actually look at.
Yep, yep.
Nice, nice looking building.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, with the neighboring residential, which is important.
Yeah, we, we thought about that a lot when it came to it and wanted to show our commitment to the community. We're really excited about being a part of it, so.
It's right on the edge of B2, right?
Yep, it's, it's the southern boundary. The other thing it does is roughly 30 feet forward of Andy's building. So. When you're coming north or coming north on Trip Hammer, it'll be the first thing you see. It'll actually screen. You know, both the buildings further north and when you're coming south because it's out forward, you'll see the, the, the main entrance and it'll stand out. So. It'll be highly visible.
Well, remember George, when you're looking at it, that we're trying to keep the buildings to the, to the scenic byways and the blacktop going backwards.
Well, that's. Now that's why the only way we can keep the blacktop to the back is I've gotta get out onto Franklin.
Yep. Yep, we can configure that road going out onto Franklin in such a way that it's not going to. To, uh, bother the house across the street badly with the lights and it's not going to allow people to turn left on the way out of there.
Okay, I know what, I know what I'm working on.
Curbing would definitely.
Just increased.
Yeah, no. Um.
Sidewalks.
Yeah, sidewalk.
I know a neighborhood 10% reduction might be really nice too.
CJ, anything else as far as this is concerned?
Yeah, I mean, uh, we spoke a little bit about, uh, the George's approach to the kind of almost two principal facades on the structure, you know, the one that'll be very visible from people traveling. North and people traveling south also. And I've just encouraged them to anchor that corner as much as possible, uh, with the building. Uh, to really make a statement of, you know, that you're entering a place. Um. And, uh, you know, hopefully, um, you know, there's a. You know, they'll respond accordingly, but, uh, they've already made, uh, some significant changes and, um, you know, we'll see, uh, hopefully, uh, what comes next.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We appreciate you stopping by tonight and thanks for waiting so long to get on the agenda.
CJ was right on the money with the rest of it.
And Jerry, Jerry, go enjoy your breakfast.
I smoked up some, uh, ribs earlier, so I've got them waiting for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Getting out early, it's only nine 30.
It's early.
Sure looks like it was gonna be a busy night.
Yeah, and it was.
Yes, thank you all, uh, for being so patient. Um. I'm not sure how much of a planning report you really want, uh, but if there's questions about anything that was on the report, um.
You sent it out to us, right?
Well, now read it.
Okay.
Pardon?
I'll double check. Jeez.
You're pretty sure that I read it.
Oh, I sent it.
You did.
Remember, I don't. Oh, okay. I don't.
Don't you wanna work on the audit?
Guess it's not that memorable. Terrible. Um, yes, uh, on, 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 uh, Monday, September 14th, we're gonna get back to our audit, hopefully.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah, we could probably answer one question tonight.
Yeah, Dean.
Yeah.
All right, the meeting's adjourned.
Oh, wait, hold on, hold on.
Oh, no.
Oh, I got one more thing. Uh, so I've mentioned those sites, uh, to the county regarding the build ready program, the Fenna Road and the Ford.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, okay. Um, and I got some detailed maps back and I just, if you wanna see them, um. I'm happy to send them on, but I think the town has to coordinate with the property owner to advance selection of the sites. Just wanted to make sure you're okay with me reaching out to the property owners to say, hey, are you interested in build ready? You have a site that could be qualified for, you know, installation of large-scale renewables under this program. Just wanted to see if that was cool.
Sure, it's great, great use for both those sites, yeah, three of them.
Okay, and then also last thing is, uh, uh, on Wednesday, September 9th, uh, the power, former power plants of folks are coming, uh, to. Give a presentation, uh, to the, to whoever, it's not really to the town board, but it's to the town about the proposal that they wanna do, uh, up there for a bunch of solar. Um, and I'll send you a link, uh, so that you could, you could always watch it on the YouTube if you want, but if you wanna join the Zoom. You could do that too.
Also, we got some, um. Oh dang, I thought of something. Oh, we got an email. About some training that could, you could take off. Did y'all see the email on the training?
About Keogee County?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sue.
I'm already registered.
Yeah, I was going to, but I wasn't sure if I was gonna be around that day. Sue, could you send, is it possible for you to send out to each of us what kind of hours we still need? A lot of us are used to go into that. New York Planning Federation meeting and taking care of our training hours every year. And we're probably not keeping good track ourselves. At least I know one of us is not keeping good track ourselves.
Yes, I can go through that tomorrow, take a look at it, see what you guys have left. And I'll email you each individually as to what I have so far. Do you want us to email us? And if you have any training that you know that you haven't sent me already, please, um, go ahead and email it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And also, um, one last thing.
Work you did for this meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all. And could I just ask, do you like the way that they were kind of packaged each project with the resolutions with all those supporting documents and like, kind of in a little chunk like that?
Very good.
Oh, yes, I see thumbs. Okay, awesome. Okay, well, good.
Now I have extra.
Okay, awesome. Okay, well, thank you all. Appreciate it.
CJ, before you, before you hang up, CJ.
Yeah, yeah.
So I missed the, um, the training session. Can you give me the link to where I have to go to do it by myself?
Yes, there will also be another for anyone who missed the training, uh, they're gonna set up another one too.
Oh, okay.
You could reach out to Ed, uh, Ed, I've tasked Ed with coordinating the remaining trainings, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hear about that ahead of time.
Uh, yeah, um, I would just get in touch with him because, um.